And welcome back to the Bennington News Hour here on Cat TV, Channel 17. We are now about to begin our Bennington Select Board Candidate Forum. Like our first forum, the format is pretty straightforward. We have a list of questions. We're going to ask them one at a time. When we're done with the questions, each candidate will have an opportunity to share some closing remarks with us. To meet the candidates who are here with us this evening, on your left is Donald Campbell and on your right is Jim Carroll. And if we're ready, we'll get started. Mr. Campbell will be the first candidate to answer the first question, which is, "What should the Select Board be doing right now to prepare the town for the arrival of legalized marijuana?" Mr. Campbell?
Well, I'll answer that, but first I wanted to take just a quick second to thank you, Robert, for putting this on tonight and to thank the good people of Cat TV. There are a lot of people working here tonight and it's great that you've taken the time to put this show on for-
And the Bennington Banner.
And the Bennington Banner. We saw them there and all the other people that are part of pulling this together. So, thank you for that. I think marijuana legalization is coming. We know that. And I think that we have to not really, there's no point really in resisting it at this point. But I think what we can do is that we can work with our, to make sure that our planning and zoning is set up so that it is somehow addressed in that. And that's one of the things that I'd like to make sure that our, our planning and zoning is, is clear on what is essentially a new category. So, it's not really medical. It's not really retail. It's somewhere in the middle. And as we think about where we want this to go in town, I think that's the place to look for. I'm not particularly worried about what the proposal is right now because the, the medical marijuana sounds like it will be a very low-profile outlet and there won't be a lot of people coming through. So, it's not likely to have a big impact on the, on the locations that they've been talking about so far. So, I'm, I don't think we, it's something we need to be afraid of. I think it's something that's coming anyway and, and we just need to make sure that, as with everything, that we make sure that our planning's in place, our zoning's in place to get it where we want it.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Would you mind repeating the question?
Certainly. "What should the Select Board be doing right now to prepare the town for the arrival of legalized marijuana?"
Well, you know, I've given a lot of thought to this. I'm not a particular fan of marijuana. I just never enjoyed it, but that's neither here nor there. But I do see the economic opportunities for not just the town, but for the state. And I've advocated with Dick Sears, among other people, that the taxes generated from the sale of marijuana, and I think that's eventually what's going to happen, is that we take a significant portion of those proceeds and they would go towards funding rehabilitation for people that may be troubled with opioid addiction and/or, you know, any other addiction. Because, you know, the, the real threat to the State of Vermont and the budget is that because of the opioid epidemic, you know, it could, it could eventually crush the State of Vermont in funding costs. So, the taxes benefited from it or that are, yeah, that are generated from it could go towards addressing something that is a terribly serious problem. I don't really know what else to say about that except that, you know, I'm, I haven't given it a lot of thought about how we would do it or where, where would it be? Would it be a Main Street sort of thing, which I think is going to be a really touchy subject? With the cannabis dispensary that Dick Sears was spearhead in getting here in town, I think he's going to do a lot of good medically. I don't know if, many people have seen the videos that I've watched with people who suffer from Parkinson's disease, but there's one that just sticks out in my mind. This man walks into the room, can't speak, barely can walk, and is, he's just quaking all over. And they put a few drops of cannabis oil underneath this man's tongue and within 20 minutes, he's able to speak, to walk and to talk without any quake whatsoever. So, while I'm, you know, I'm ambivalent about pot itself, I do see that there is some benefit. And like I said, I would like to see the, the state and the town take advantage of the tax benefits with respect to that and devote it to treatment of addictions in all, in all its forms.
Okay. Mr. Carroll will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, "Would the adoption of a local option tax benefit the people of Bennington?" Mr. Carroll?
I, I think generally it would, but I'll tell you, I have taken the time to speak with, let's see, David Schaaf, The Bookstore, Madison's, and I know there were a couple of other businesses. And what they've expressed to me is that, you know, Bennington, the downtown is already suffering. And a 1% option tax, while I endorse it in general, because, you know, there's the potential, and this is the way it works out, 70% of the 1% option tax, the town of Bennington would be able to keep and 30% goes to the state. And I brought this up in our last Select Board meeting. And I think it's, we could as a board determine that the downtown be exempt. Because here's the, the chief complaint that I heard, particularly from Dave Schaaf, is that, you know, they're already, in The Bookstore, they're already struggling against the internet and it just makes their business more complicated and frankly, more expensive. So, going forward, I would support a 1% option tax, especially when it comes to places like Hannaford, Walmart, Kmart and Price Chopper. I mean, that would be a huge boost to the economy. And I really don't think that people would mind paying an extra penny on the dollar. And, you know, ultimately, what I'd like to see that money go toward is either special projects or ultimately, I think ideally, is to have that three-quarters of a million dollars or close to three-quarters of a million dollars go towards lowering people's property taxes. That would be a huge relief for taxpayers. And that's where I think the greatest benefit could be achieved. Because I, you know, I think Donald, you know this and probably every board member knows, the one, number one complaint that we hear is, is about property taxes. And if we can do anything to help lower their property taxes, then I'm all for that.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Well, I think, as with so many of your questions, Robert, I think this is a nuanced question and it's a little bit difficult to be binary about it. But I would say almost definitely an adoption of a local options tax would be good for Bennington, but it also at the same time would be hard for some of the downtown merchants and for some of the other merchants. So, my personal feeling is that the Charter Committee's done a good job of setting up a situation where the Select Board could look at it and do some studies to make sure that we're absolutely clear about what the impacts and benefits will be. And until we do that work, I'm not sure we can really make this decision. My hunch is that we'll find out that between hospitality and alcohol and food, which, which the Charter Committee has recommended be possibly separate, separately taxable categories, that we might be able to find something in there that would bring some benefit to Bennington. So, there are a lot of towns around Vermont, and Manchester's a great example, that have used a local options tax to great effect. And if we want to think about expanding our community and expanding our services, it's something that we just can't ignore. But we do have to look into it more deeply before we, before we go that route.
Okay. Mr. Campbell will be the first candidate to answer the next question. "If the value of the properties located within the recently established Tax Increment Financing District Downtown do not increase enough to generate sufficient revenue to service a Tax Increment Financing District Improvement Bond, how do you propose paying for such a bond?" Mr. Campbell?
Well, we're going to be on the hook for it. I think that's the bottom line, is that the TIF district is something that, that the town is basically endorsing, a situation that will generate income. And if the income is not generated, then the town's on the hook for it. Your question is how do we pay for it? And there are a number of different mechanisms, but the bottom line is it would be, it would come from the taxpayers. And so, there's, there is some risk involved in it, but that's the reason why you don't get into a TIF district lightly. That's why you do all of your homework and you work really hard to set up situations where whatever you're investing is in is as certain as can be to generate the kind of income you're talking about. So, this is not something that TIF district designers and municipal officials take lightly. It's, say, "Oh, do a little of this, do a little of that." You have to really dig into the numbers and you have to make sure that the investment and the return is going to be there for the property so that you will see that TIF district get paid off. Now, the, the success rates in Vermont are extremely high. Virtually all of them pay off. And so, it's a tremendous tool for people to be able to, for communities to be able to use. We are so lucky in Bennington to have essentially $5.4 million of taxes that would normally go up to the state for the education fund that we can kind of keep down here. And so, it's, it's a, it's a huge boon for our community and we have to be very, very careful. We have to keep a sharp pencil and we have to really watch the numbers as we go along. So, but none of us on the Select Board and in the town are going to make any slapdash investments or light investments. It's going to be very carefully planned.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
I would like to echo much of what Donald said and thanks for stealing my thunder.
Sorry, buddy.
I know you are. We were very, very careful about the TIF district and this was not going to be an easy thing for the town to get. We had quite a few number of people from the state come down and it was a month, many months-long process. And as Donald pointed out, I think it's eight out of nine towns, is that right? Something like that? Eight out of nine towns-
One didn't fly, yeah.
Right. Were successful. And I remember it was approximately four years ago, the town manager and the mayor of Bear, or Berry, came down and did a presentation and they showed what Berry Town looked like before they had TIF and after. And you want to talk to pressing. I mean, the, the town was just a shambles. And in three years, they were able to turn it around. They had a 90% vacancy rate and within three years, they had a 90% occupancy rate. And while Bennington isn't on that same level, we, we still do struggle. But here's the opportunity with the TIF district. It gives us opportunities to do the infrastructure needed, particularly with respect to the Putnam Block, that builders would otherwise have to do, which makes it more competitive and more inviting for them to come and build in the, in the town of Bennington. And I've said this in meetings, in past, recent meetings, that now that we have the TIF, we really need to start thinking about the areas of town and start to plan about improving those areas that might not, not, might not look great because we, there's a variety of ways that we can spend this money and it, but they all go towards infrastructure. And that means sidewalks and water lines and street lighting and streetscape. And we should start as a board to, to be forward-thinking about that and really start to apply it so that each one of the parts of town that may need some help, we can address in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Carroll will be the first candidate to answer the next question. "How is poverty affecting Bennington?" Mr. Carroll?
Well, you know, it's, that's just such a tough thing to tackle, you know, that it's, and I advocated this, oh, God, I think it was within the first six or eight months that I advocated for a livable wage. And when people aren't able to have a livable, livable wage, you know, they rely on the state and the feds for help and assistance, you know, whether it's Women Infants and Children WIC programs and food stamps and Medicare for their care. And I've always advocated that if we paid people a livable wage, and here's the thing, it just makes sense to me mathematically and, you know, there are more conservatives who just are totally opposed to that. And here's how it works out in my mind. If you pay somebody a livable wage, it makes them less dependent upon the government. And therefore, the cost of, of helping the impoverished, the burden on the general public is, is, is lessened. So, I've never quite understood the opposition to a livable wage. When you lift people out of poverty, you know, here's the thing and the research that I've, that I've done, and I've done quite extensive, extensive research on this. When you give people a livable wage who are otherwise struggling, they spend that money locally and that, and that money goes to local businesses. And when they do spend that money, all boats rise with the tide. So, it really fosters a better economy and, and helps local businesses. And I think that's really a real concrete way of addressing poverty. Because, you know, what walks hand in hand with poverty is drugs and crime and domestic violence. And not to say, and I don't mean, I don't mean to paint too broadly a brush on that, but, you know, they're, they're pretty closely aligned and if you can move and lift people out of poverty, those things are greatly diminished. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Well, Robert, your question's a little odd. It's, it's, "How is poverty affecting Bennington?" And I guess it's, there are a lot of different directions you could take that. But I'd throw back at you, "How is poverty affecting Vermont? How is poverty affecting America?" Poverty is something that is very widespread and is something that people have been trying to get after for a long time. I think it's pretty well documented over time, but also in our community, that poverty leads to some challenges in the schools. Poverty leads to challenges with housing. Poverty leads to a lot of different challenges. And one of the things about Bennington that I'm, I'm proud of and I'm, feel good about this is that we've really worked hard to make sure that people of all walks of life have a decent life. And some of the things that we've done, particularly on making housing both good quality and affordable, I think are really important. I look around us at, you know, Williamstown and Wilmington and Manchester and none of them are carrying a lot of water on, on affordable housing, whereas Bennington has chosen to really make sure that a population of people that need good quality housing can, can find it. So, how has it affected Bennington? It's, it affects Bennington and it's something we have to all work on together and it's probably not going away anytime soon. Vermont's a little bit of a, you know, the wages aren't high in Vermont, to Jim's point. There's a lot of look, looking at minimum wages and whether or not that's a good idea or a bad idea. But I think the livable wage concept has really begun to stick in Vermont and I think pretty much everybody's committed to trying to figure out how we crack that nut. That doesn't answer your question really, Robert, "How is poverty affecting Bennington?" But I think it's most probably important to acknowledge that we do have poverty. We have a fair amount of poverty. It's got a lot of different faces on it and, and we all need to do everything we can to, to work on it.
Okay. Mr. Campbell will be the first candidate to answer the next question. "Name one thing that you are committed to accomplishing as a member of the Select Board." Mr. Campbell?
Only one? There are so many. Let's see. Well, I have a particular passion for, there are a lot of important things. So, I'm not, you have not asked me what do I think the most important thing to get done is. And I think probably one of the most important things to get done is this work that we're doing on downtown. But one of the things that I have a real passion for is trying to get people outdoors. And it's been something of a theme throughout my life, but I really, really would like to see this ninja path get finished. Because I think the connecting Bennington College to Benmont Avenue is going to be a wonderful resource for people. Now, is, is that going to fix Bennington? No, that's just one thing that means a lot to me to see get done. But it's already, there's already a lot of trail there and it's going to be coming probably online, at least in a, in a rough format this summer. So, I'm really excited about that. There are a lot of other things that I, I could talk about, but I'm only allowed to list one. So, I'm going to give you that one as being something I'd really like to see happen in the next year.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
I don't know where to begin. But I think my passion has always been for the downtown. And I've spoken with quite a few people about, you know, we've talked about in many board meetings and with John Shanahan and other people about, talking about Bennington's identity and struggling with, you know, narrowing it down to one thing. And I don't think that makes sense. I think we need to address and really talk about all the things that are good about Bennington. The arts, our history, food. Phil Pappas came up with a great idea and I'm going to propose it to the board because I can't get, you know, Phil into the room and he knows that I'm kidding. Because it's an intimidating process, but he has this, this idea for quite a few plaques that are, that point to the historical significance of Bennington. And he's gotten agreements and they're bronze plaques and they're beautiful plaques. And they point to the historical significance of the downtown. Now, those are all well and good and they're pretty ideas. But really, the, whatever I can do to advance the development of the Putnam Block really is deep in my heart. This is something that goes back at least a generation, if not further. And without tooting my own horn, but I will, back when I had my food cart, if you remember, Old Castle got thrown out of, well, didn't get thrown out, but they were asked to vacate the, the art center out on the west end. And they were searching around for a new home and the KFC, the current home of Old Castle, was going to go vacant. And having my cart in front of Greenberg's every day, I knew Robin, the CFO of Greenberg's. And I said, "You know, Old Castle was looking for a new home. Would you mind if I contacted them?" And she said, "No, by all means." So, I got ahold of Eric Peters and that's how Old Castle found its home. And when Bill Colvin did his big presentation about the Putnam Block, he came up to me and he said, "You know, you're the, you're the reason this all started." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "If you hadn't come to us about a new home for Old Castle, this might not have happened." So, here's the thing, I'm not trying to boast that, you know, I was the catalyst in all this. But what I do want to make clear to the people of Bennington, if you've got a good idea, speak up. Come to a Select Board meeting. Talk about it because that's how real change happens. And it, you may not think it's significant, but it is.
I'll have to go ahead and stop you there so we can keep moving forward. Mr. Carroll will be the first candidate to answer the next question. "How would replacing Bennington's council manager form of government with a council mayor form of government affect the operation of town government?" Mr. Carroll?
Well, you know, that's a pretty broad question. Do you want me to refer to the current ballot measure? Well, the, the current ballot measure as it's written, I think, and here's, I want to make this perfectly clear. I am not necessarily opposed to a mayoral for, of government. But I think what we need, this current form or idea, I just think is, is poorly constructed. And the idea of a mayor, as this ballot measure calls for having veto power over the, the Select Board, is just a bad idea because it makes the, the Select Board, you know, unnecessary, superfluous. And it, and it puts the power in, too much power into the hands of one person. Now, what I would suggest and what I've said to some of its strongest proponents is that we sit down over months and weeks and really look at the, the contrasting, well, possibilities and hash it out. But I think running and rushing headlong into something that really is poorly defined is not going to serve the town of Bennington. And I spoke with one of our state senators about this and he said that, he said, and I don't want to mention him by name, but anyway, he said that historically and traditionally, if a ballot measure passes, it goes to the governor and historically and traditionally, the governor signs it. And the minute that the governor signs that, it becomes the law. And under this ballot measure, the town manager would be gone effective that day. And we can't afford to lose a town manager or an assistant town manager who has a solid understanding of local, state and federal laws. So, again, I'm not opposed to the idea, but I think we really need to sit down together as a community and hash it out in a very meaningful way. And that's it. I don't think I have anything more to add.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Well, one of the things we learned, I think, from the, the work of the Charter Committee when they, they spent a lot of time mulling this over and they had a number of open sessions and a couple of guests that came down and looked hard at this issue is that there are a lot of different forms of government that might work here. A lot of different forms of government in Vermont. And it's not necessarily a black and white choice, sort of mayor or no mayor. There are different ways that we could go into things. But if, if the question is really what would replacing a Select Board type system that we have right now with a sort of council and mayor system, what effect would that have on Bennington? I think there are real effects. And it's worth saying, it's worth me saying that I really believe in the Select Board system, which is, which is a long, deep tradition for New England and for Vermont. Most Vermont towns have, have Select Boards and that's the default system in Vermont. It's a system that's based on largely on volunteerism, on people in the community taking a turn when they're able and when they have time. It's very apolitical in terms of, I don't even know what the different members of our Select Board, what their party affiliations are. It doesn't matter. We're, we're thinking about what's best for the town. It's also somewhat diffuse. There, in our situation, there are seven members. Sometimes there are five, sometimes there's three. But when you have seven members, you know, you have a lot of different people that are putting eyes on a decision. And I think one of the nice things about the, the situation that we have right now is there are a lot of checks and balances. So, we end up having people from all over the community on the Select Board making these decisions. We've got a teacher. We've got a lawyer. We've got a land conservationist. You know, we've got a number of different people that represents, that represent different sectors of the community. And they have to come together and kind of work on these hard issues, bring the input they get from their different parts of town and come up with the best solution. I think that's, I think that's a strong form of government. I think it's a fair form of government and I think it's a form of government that's not only served us well, but served us relatively inexpensively over the years. So, we have not had to pay for an expensive mayor. Having said that, I'm with Jim, that, you know, there, there are a lot of different options and we could talk about them. But if we want to talk about them, let's do it the right way. Not just look at some random proposal, but let's have a referendum and have it get passed, which it hasn't in the last two referendums. And if, if the referendum passes, that yes, that the community would like us to develop a, a mayoral proposal, then the Select Board should sit down and have open dialogue with the community and work on it. In the absence of that, I think we can assume the community is pretty happy with the way things are, are being run.
Okay. Mr. Campbell will be the first candidate to answer the next question. "Is the quality of Bennington's schools helping or hurting Bennington's economic development?" Mr. Campbell?
Our economic development? Yeah, it's definitely helping our economic development. Our, our schools are working so hard right now. It's not, not just our schools. The schools all over Vermont. But our schools are working so hard right now to- so hard right now to acknowledge that not every student is the same. So, you know, as you start looking at flexible pathways to success, it's really important to kind of think about students as not just being all bound for college or all bound for tech school or something like that, but, but that everybody has a different way that they're, that they're going to get there. And I think that the recent emphasis that's been on internships and apprenticeships and the flexible pathways work that has been done and a lot of the different flexible curriculum components that have been built to it, I think these things build strength, build resilience in our students. And I think it's the kind of thing that's going to give us a more successful population. I acknowledge, you know, it's difficult. It's, our schools are up against a tough job. It's, it's not easy taking a lot of different people from a lot of different walks of life and, and making them all successful. But I think one of the great things that our school is beginning to do is to realize that all people can be successful, it's just that they get to success in a different way. And so I think we actually have a pretty strong system right now and it's, it's getting, I would say, better and better every year.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
I really don't have too much to add to that. But with respect to the premise, is it important to the economic vitality of the town? Of course it is. People that want to come to, want to move to Bennington and they have children are going to look at our school system. And I think by and large, they're doing the best job they can and with imperfect results as, and that's true all over the country. But I think that, you know, the relative success rate that our school systems have, I think there's a lot to be proud of with respect to that.
Okay. Mr. Carroll will be the first candidate to answer the next question. Does the Bennington Police Department have all the resources it needs to effectively deal with Bennington's drug and crime problems? If not, what initiatives would you take as a member of the select board to increase funding for our police department? Mr. Carroll?
Well, you know, at our past budget meetings, Chief Doucette has been very clear about what his needs are. And he has not really spoken of any complaints that he has because by and large, the, the select board hasn't, you know, given him, he hasn't given us a wish list and said, you know, take whatever you want. But with particular respect to the drug problem in town, particularly the opioid problem, you know, I would gladly devote any resources that we can to that. But going, going back to the legalization of marijuana, for police officers in this town, once it's legalized, it's going to free up so much of their budget and the money that they have to spend in interdiction and, and fining people and incarcerating people. So that's going to be a tremendous burden off the shoulders of the police department. So, you know, I'm committed, I really am committed to the opioid crisis. And as a matter of fact, as I was telling some other people, I've got a meeting set up with Dick Sears this coming week to talk about reestablishing a drug court for the town of Bennington. Because currently there's, you know, there's an emphasis on conviction and incarceration. And I think there's a better solution for that. And Dick Sears is going to talk with a group of us Monday, the 26th at 3:00 at St. Peter's to talk about reestablishing the drug court because it just makes good economic sense. Instead of pushing, pushing for incarceration and the breakup of families, kids going into foster care at great expense, people losing their jobs, their homes, their apartments, their property. Let's get them on the path toward rehabilitation. And that's not to say, you know, if they don't stay on the straight and narrow, there are going to be consequences. But I, I think it just makes more sense morally and economically to guide these people toward rehabilitation rather than incarceration. So I think that's all I have to say on that right now.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Great. Yeah, and so I too have very strong feelings about investments that we need to make in combating drug addiction and the opioid crisis. And again, it's not just Bennington. So it's Bennington, Bennington County, Vermont, New England, America, you know, even the rest of the world. So this is a really big problem, but it's also maybe an opportunity for me to just say, I think part of being a successful select board is recognizing that you're not an expert in everything. And I am not an expert in police procedure and I'm not an expert in, in fighting drug crime. And so what we do is we really trust our employees. We try to hire really good quality employees and we try to trust them for their best recommendations and follow their lead. So Chief Doucette has, we have followed as many of his recommendations as we can. And so do I think that he has all the resources he needs in your words? No, I'm sure he, there are many resources that he could use. But like everything with maintaining a town budget, it's a balance. So we need to figure out which are the most effective things that we should be investing in, which are the, which are the police tools and staffing and other things like that that will really make a difference so that we can actually have an impact on this. And for now, we're following our chief of police's recommendations and I think, I think we are pretty happy with his, with his work and really the work of the whole department, which is, which is a pretty amazing group of people.
Mr. Campbell will be the first candidate to answer the next question. If you are involved in hiring the next town manager, what qualities and qualifications will you look for in making your choice? Mr. Campbell?
Well, I think a lot of that depends on what form of government we have. So if we, one of the interesting things about the town manager situation that we have right now is that a lot of people are confused and many of us talk about this a lot, about whether or not our current town manager is more of a chief operating officer, a COO, or whether it's more like a chief, a CEO. And from the former, you might expect just really good mechanical operations and really good systems. And from the latter, you might expect more vision and more kind of long-term thinking. And I, I think up until now, we've really looked to our town manager to deliver very good municipal systems. So roads, sewer, water, infrastructure, getting, making sure that the budgets are efficient. It's great that so many budgets in the past years have been delivered under the cost of inflation. I think that's something that we can say has been consistently done, except, except for last year with the rescue squad. But, but other than that, you know, we've, we've kept a tight budget throughout this whole process, which is really important to me. And so if we're hiring somebody to be that person, that COO, then I would look for somebody who is, has tremendous person, people skills, that has tremendous financial management skills, that has the ability to keep a lot of balls in the air, that can deal with things like union contracts and engineers and really keep the systems working. If we want something that's a little bit more like a CEO or a, something that would be more mayor-like, then we would look for someone that has a lot more vision, in my mind. And we would look for a situation where we would be asking that person to help the select board set the vision. Right now, I think we, as a select board, set the vision and the manager executes it. If, if we shift things a little bit, that future town manager could be a larger part of setting the vision. But the way we have things set up right now, I would anticipate that the next town manager would be somebody who's really good at getting things done and who really has a lot of follow-through and a lot of people skills. And those, those I think in a town manager are the, are the primary skills. If we go some other direction, then there's a whole nother set of skills.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
I'm going to agree with Donald in large measure, but as far as qualities and qualifications, we need to have somebody who can hit the ground running, who has competence with local, state and federal laws, knows who he needs to reach out to with respect to any municipal project and has to be able to think on his feet. And, you know, I've been able to go into the town office and either ask Dan or Stu a question and 99.9% of the time, they have an answer for me. And that's what I want in a future town manager. Again, as Donald said, people skills have got to be important. But as he pointed out, you know, generally speaking, Stu has been a chief financial officer who's managed the business. And we've, we, the select board have provided the vision with the direction that we've wanted to go. And I'm comfortable with that. Although I don't think it would necessarily be a bad idea if the town manager had an idea that he thought was worthy. But I want to tell you that in all the years that I've been on the board, I've never, and some people suspect this, that the, the town manager is somehow a puppet master and he's telling us what to do and how to vote. And I want to tell you flat out, that has never, ever once happened. He's never told me one way or the other on how to vote. He's laid out the alternatives, what's at stake, and left it at that. And I think it's safe to say that he's done that with every one of the board members that I've served with. But anyway, to answer your, the original question, we've got to have somebody who walks through the door, who is competent right from the start. We can't afford to gamble with, you know, let's say a mayoral form of government and this, whoever this mayor comes in, you know, he could be a snake oil salesman who makes a good sales pitch and really that people think, well, he's a really nice guy. Well, I just want to remind people that we did that in the 2016 presidential election and got to ask you, how's that working out?
Okay. Mr. Carroll will be the first candidate to answer the next question. What should the select board be doing to address the affordable housing dilemma in Bennington? Mr. Carroll?
Well, and I'm proud to say that in the years that I've been on the board, we've approved three different projects and a fourth rehabilitated project at Applegate. And it's meant over $21 million of money that's come into the town of Bennington. And while there's a dispute over the Silver Street project that has not been resolved yet and the other two projects are still under development, here's the thing that, and here's one of the things that I'm most proud about with respect to affordable housing, is that prior to that, you know, there was no, there was no insistence that we use local contractors. And I was really appalled by that. And going forward, and Donald, I think, will attest to this and I'm sure Tom Jacobs would, is that, you know, I pushed really, really hard to make sure that that money stays local, that grant money is spent with local contractors so that our local economy is benefiting, benefiting from it. But anyway, to go back to your central premise, what do we need to do? More. We need to make sure that there's affordable housing that is not stripping people of the vast majority of their income so that they don't have to end up working two or three or even sometimes four jobs just to pay the rent and cover their, their bills. So how do we get more affordable housing? Working more with programs like Shire's, who does an excellent job of getting great tenants who have to pass a credit and a criminal background check. So you're getting neighbors that all of us would want. And that's what I continue, that I'll continue to fight for.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Well, Robert, you, you talk about the affordable housing dilemma as though we all agree what the dilemma is. And I'm not sure that that's the case. I think that the dilemma might mean something different to a lot of different people. But certainly there is a shortage of affordable housing throughout Bennington, throughout Vermont. It's just really tough to be able to afford housing on the wages, as we talked about earlier, that are available in this, in this community. But one of the things I'm really excited about, and I think this is something that we need to continue to work towards, is helping people find ways to move from affordable housing into homeownership. And so I'm pretty excited about the Neighbor Works group that has opened up an office in downtown, just next to the Little Britain Fish and Chips, kind of in that area, a little, little further up North Street. And they're going to work really hard on both renting, helping people with being better tenants and being better landlords, but they're also going to help people with being ready to buy a home. So as, as you move through the affordable housing network and you hopefully build job skills that eventually you could, a certain number of these people that are needing these services could eventually aspire to own their own home. And I think that homeownership is something that the select board has been pretty, pretty strong on trying to work towards because the more people own homes here, the more invested there in the community and the better things kind of go for everybody. So I'm not sure if that exactly addresses the dilemma you're thinking about. We do need more affordable housing in Bennington and throughout the state. We're lucky to have the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board making really big investments around, around the community. And so there are ways of getting more housing. But I think also, just to summarize, we really need to work on offering people a pathway from the affordable housing to their own home and something that they can feel proud about investing in.
Okay. Mr. Campbell will be the first candidate to answer the next question. Oftentimes, at select board meetings, we're told that the citizen comment portion of the meeting is not intended to provide an opportunity for citizens to have a dialogue with the select board. Do you agree with that point of view? And if so, how do you think the select board should respond to citizens' questions? Mr. Campbell?
I think we're working on that. I, I think that's not, not something we've gotten right yet. And I think we're going to continue to work on that. When I joined the select board, citizen's comment, as it is in most places, was relegated to the very end of the meeting so that the select board could kind of peacefully get through all of its stuff and then there would be some kind of fracas at the end with citizen's comment. But that means that citizens who want to comment have to sit through the entire meeting to try to, try to make their comments. So Chairman Jacobs and I decided that when I got on that we were going to try to, and Michael Keane was part of this, moved the citizen's comment to the very beginning of the meeting and allow people to come and say what they wanted to say and be, be involved in the discussion and then leave if they wanted to. And that seemed like a good idea, but what ended up happening was that a few people would come in and would kind of hijack the conversation a little bit and it would, it made it very hard to kind of get a meeting started. And if we happened to have guests coming from Montpelier or from some other place, they would have to wait and wait and wait while we got through the citizen's comment. So where we're, where we are now is we're, we're trying to get through, if we have a agenda that has guests coming from out of town, driving to come help us with some problem we're working on, we try to put them first. And then before we get into the gritty select board business that, that could happen anytime, we're trying to leave space for citizen's comment. And then after that, we'll kind of go through the grind that we have to go through. But your question is, should it be a conversation? And I think my feeling is, right now, and I'm, I'm reevaluating my feelings on this a little bit, but my, right now, my feelings are that there should be a time when citizens can come speak safely without feeling like they're going to get grilled or interrogated, that they can offer comments, they can offer questions, and that the select board and the town manager should commit to get back to them with answers. Now, your question really talks about should we allow a debate to happen? And I think, I'm going to say no, we should not allow it to become a debate at citizen's comment. We should receive the comments and we should get answers back as able. If there are short, kind of factual answers, when's the next town meeting? Is this street going to get paved? going to get paved, you know, if there are things that our manager can answer right away, I think that's a good idea. But the idea of getting into a debate with the Select Board seems to me like a very fraught way of going about it. So having said all that, I know that the Select Board needs to work on figuring out a way to have more dialogue with the community and to do a better job of it. I think the community also will have to be a part of reciprocal effort there.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Would you reread the question?
Okay.
Thanks.
Oftentimes, at Select Board meetings, we are told that the citizen comment portion of the meeting is not intended to provide an opportunity for citizens to have a dialogue with the Select Board. Do you agree with that point of view? And if so, how do you think the Select Board should respond to citizens' questions?
I do agree with the viewpoint that it doesn't allow greater dialogue. And I have to say that I disagree, and I have disagreed with both our chair and our vice chair about this, especially when it comes to really controversial things, and someone, a member of the audience, really throws out some outlandish stuff. You know, I've always said that we need to address this stuff right then and there, because by our silence, it becomes fact when we don't address it immediately. And as Donald, the phrase that you used, it's fraught when we don't do that. So I'm, I don't know whether I necessarily would indulge the idea of a debate, but I think that we, as a board, and board members, have a right to engage in some form of discussion. Granted, it shouldn't go on for too great a period of time. And, you know, if it's something that needs to be explored in greater depth, then we go on in the future to make that a part of an agenda item that maybe we, as a board, can agree needs further discussion. But I would have to disagree with the policy of not making it some quasi-form, or some form of a limited debate, or discussion. I think that's the word that I would prefer with people who come to us with an idea or a problem that they have, because it's intimidating enough just to stand up in front of the board. And I know that from doing it myself before I was a board member. And then, you know, in the first two years that I was on the board, if you could have seen my hands underneath the table, you know, it's, it takes some courage to get up and speak, and I think it's important that you honor that courage when people get up to speak and have a limited discussion. It doesn't have to be a full-blown, you know, capturing of the time of the Select Board for an extended period of time. But I think, yes, I think it's worth engaging our constituents in some limited form.
Okay. That brings us to the end of the question and answer portion of this candidate forum. Both candidates will now have an opportunity to leave us with some closing remarks, beginning with Mr. Carroll.
Thank you. I want to say to the people of Bennington that this is, serving the people of Bennington is probably the proudest accomplishment of my life. I come from a family that has served the people of Bennington for a very, very long time. And while I've always been very proud of my parents, I feel it necessary to invoke the name of Timmy Corcoran, because he was the man that I really wanted to be like. Timmy did so much good for so many people. And there are so many stories that I can tell you. He and I talked just about every day, right up until the day before he died. And I enjoyed his company, and I miss him terribly. And he was such an important role in my life. And even before I got elected, people would come to my food cart, and they'd have a problem that needed to be addressed, and they didn't know where to go. And I would either direct them to Tim or to Stu, or I would take it upon myself and go and see either one of those people, and help them get an answer to their problem. It may not always have been the answer that they wanted, but it's what the law provided. And I still, to this day, I would say arguably that I get contacted more than any other Select Board member, at least two or three times a week. They come to my door, I get emails, I get text messages, phone calls, and I'm telling you, it is so rewarding. I feel like I'm making a difference in the lives of the people of Bennington, and I hope that the voters of Bennington will allow me to continue to do that. I enjoy it, and I'm proud to serve the people of Bennington. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
And you do a good job, Jim.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I fret a little bit about us becoming a divided community, and I do worry particularly with this mayoral issue that we're talking about, that it's going to be treated as a very us-and-them vote. It's just a moment in time, you know, we'll get through this one way or the other. But I look around the country, and I see great divisions around the country. I see a lot of people mad at everybody, at other people, and people factioning off. And I really would love to see our town not do that. So although I'm not supportive of the mayoral petition as it's written, I will say, I think that no matter what happens, we all need to make room for the idea that we have different thoughts on this, and that we're much stronger if we stay together as a community and we continue to respect each other. Bennington is at a really exciting point in our evolution, you know? I have been here for a long time, since the early '60s, not being specific there, but it's really exciting to see what the Bennington Redevelopment Partners are doing, you know? That Putnam Block has been in a sort of slow decay mode for as long as I've been alive. And we are not about to turn the corner. I feel like we have turned a corner at this point. Bennington has started around a corner, and at this point, it's our ground to lose. If we slip back into the dark, it'll be our fault. You know, at this point, we have come around this corner, and we are looking at major downtown redevelopment, we're looking at major downtown investments, we're looking at increases in occupation downtown, and we have a tremendous amount of optimism as a result of that. That, one of the things that doesn't make it into the news is that some of our local institutions have been tremendous partners in this. So for years, for almost, I think, almost forever, Bennington College has been sort of on the edges of what happens in Bennington. Well, Bennington College is an extremely active partner right now, and so is Southern Vermont College, and so are some of the other educational institutions. So we have a lot to look forward to. Putnam Block breaking ground in the spring, hopefully get that Ninja Trail done this summer, you know, and then we start building out the rest of the downtown. So a lot to look forward to, and I think we just have to not backslide at this point. We've come around a corner, let's keep up the momentum. So that's, that's it. Thank you for your support. It's been a pleasure to serve on this board, and I hope you'll reelect me and give me another shot at it. Thanks again, Robert, and thanks, Cat TV, and thanks, Bennington Banner. It's been really fun to be here.
All right. Well, that will conclude our Select Board Candidate Forum. We want to thank the candidates who spent the evening here with us tonight, and indeed, we appreciate all the candidates' willingness not only to run for office, but to serve as well. It is difficult and thankless work, and they are all to be commended. I'd like to thank the staff here at Cat TV for putting this all together, in particular, the producer of this evening's forums, Mike Cutler, and would also like to thank Derek Carson with the Bennington banner for his participation in the forums. On March 6th, if I'm getting the date right, please go out and vote. Vote for the candidates of your choice. Vote in favor or against the issues that interest you, but please go out and vote. You've been watching the Bennington News Hour. Good night, and have a pleasant tomorrow.